Session to order. If I have a gavel, I can gavel it in. It is April 20th, 2021, and this is our main session focusing on urban and the energy sector. So we're going to start with an agenda check. Does anybody have any thing they want to do about the agenda? Sonia, I'm going to do my best to remember that you're on my screen here, but if I don't call on you for some reason, speak up. All right. So nothing to the agenda. We have a 20-minute presentation and then an hour discussion. And I know that probably many of us are going to have a lot of questions, but it seems like it's best to let Frank go through his whole presentation. So just make sure that you write down your questions because we have a whole hour for them. And there's a lot of information to go through. So we'll get started on our urban and the energy sector. Frank?
Great. President Schlossberg, commissioners, good evening. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so you can see that. Appreciate the opportunity to have a work session. You know, a couple of thank yous, first of all, this is rather a unique forum for us, having some in person, some remote. And so we appreciate that. I think I, as the IS staff, did a great job setting up the room for us. And hopefully the sound is good for those who are remote as well. And then Ann and Holly in the back room as well, producing what the public has seen. So thanks to them. I'll get right into this. This is a work session, and so what I'm presenting to kick this off has really meant to stimulate some conversation, develop some understandings of what is and can be a pretty complex issue, which is energy and carbon and how those systems work together. And so the goal is to eventually let the board have discussions, ask questions, understand where there might be further interest or gaps and those types of things. Where I posed at least three questions for you to ponder as we go through this. One is, you know, should we change anything in the strategic plan based on climate or energy-driven conditions? And if so, how so? You know, not just yes or no, but what areas might you like to look at further? What future board policy opportunities might the board be interested in pursuing or having management look into or explore or assess? We'd be curious to learn that. And then also some of the control measures that you have as a board, things around budgeting and allocations. Are we allocating and pursuing the priorities and investments and programs correctly? And so kind of keep those things in mind as we go through it. I won't go through this slide in detail. This is just a reminder that we do have a strategic plan. An important piece of the strategic plan is that we have some strategic priorities, which includes the reassembly of our generation portfolio in the context of a changing climate, new technology, developing markets and customer expectations and those types of things. We also have to keep in mind that we really need to do that in the context of our core values, which safety, reliability, affordability, and environmental stewardship. All those things are important when we look to understand these issues. And then we also have a climate change policy. And probably the most important thing there relative to this conversation is understanding our electric power portfolio, utilizing low-carbon resources without impacting safety, reliability. I think those two come back into play. As a reminder on timing with some of these decisions, this is a timeline based on, you can see the size of the circles have to do with the size of the resource that we're making a decision on. And there's different colors representative, you know, green is wind, thermal are the sort of orange colors. You see Seneca out here, 2026. Back in 2020, we had a relicensing and Carmen Smith decision. And then, you know, way out here off the scale is the end of the license with Lieberg, although we may have some decisions relative, I mean, to kind of set up an earlier decision on that. The one thing that is missing here is, of course, BPA. BPA sort of in the, in the big context of the decision at the end of 2028. There's a lot of steps that go into getting there. We'll likely have to start making these decisions in the 2025 to 2028 kind of timeframe. There's lots of different, you know, this is building up the brick wall of different things that we have to do to really get ready for that. You know, you'll notice that some in here that we've talked a little bit about, you know, here's AMI. It's an important piece of technology, but also rate reform. How do we align rates to offer new types of products and services? Maybe a clean portfolio version, maybe things related to time of use or different kinds of products and services. IRP as well, which stands for Integrated Resource Plan. That's, that's how we match up our load with, with our generating resources. I'll back up just a little bit and then come in rather quickly. I wanted to talk about just the grid in general. This is, this is really how energy flows across the United States. This is, these are huge numbers and really not, you know, don't talk about the numbers so much. Here we are, the electricity sector. Electricity is generated still across the country from three main big sources, coal, natural gas, and nuclear. Those, those are the big three. Across the country, hydro is about 6%, although in the Northwest, we're very fortunate because in EWEB's case, it's probably about 70%. Very, much more prominent in the Northwest than it is across the country. There's a couple of other things to note here. And this, on the far right, you notice this lighter gray, that's wasted energy. There is a tremendous amount of energy that is wasted through inefficiencies. You know, it's the big two that contribute to that. Here's transportation. And basically, this is, this, this section right here is the heat coming out of your tailpipe. Internal combustion engines are very inefficient, and a lot of that just is wasted out, out the back end of the car. And then same with the thermal resources here. There's a lot of wasted energy that comes out of when we convert a thermal process into electricity. Those tend to be 40, 50, sometimes a little more percentage efficient. So you'll notice this is a pretty wide band here, about the same size as the coal and natural gas and nuclear sections here. So 50% efficiency is, is one of the big reasons. Direct use of natural gas coming down here. The, the obviously, we, we need to keep an eye on when we electrify. Are we simply moving from direct use up to here, which then creates additional inefficiencies? So it's just worth keeping in mind. And then, of course, the, the desire to build out wind and solar. We'll talk a little bit more about the implications and opportunities with that. State of Oregon flow is, is somewhat similar. This is presented slightly differently. It's imported energy versus energy produced in the state. You'll notice hydro, much bigger percentage here from an electricity generation perspective. But then coal is purely still present in the energy that is consumed. So you have to keep in mind, this is consumed energy, not generated energy. This is imported from places like Wyoming and Utah and Montana and goes into the electricity sector along with natural gas. And then you still see some of the big waste streams that you did at a national level. The coming out of transportation and coming out of a thermal generation of electricity. Those are the largest waste streams. So pretty similar. Some noticeable differences, especially the presence of hydroelectric in the Northwest, which is something that Mother Nature blessed us with here in this part of the country. And it contributes very, very, a lot to the cleanliness of our electricity supply here relative to other parts of the country. This is, this is the grid. The darker lines are, are higher degrees of transmission capability. Here we are out in the West. You see some lines down to California. You see some heading out to the East into Wyoming and Utah. That's because there's a lot of generation out there. But you do notice there's, there's kind of a gap right down through the middle of the country. And, and there's not a lot of transfer capability or generation, transmission between the Western part of the United States and then all of this out, out to the East. When we refer to that, we call it the Western interconnect. So when we refer to our grid that we are part of, it's the Western interconnect. So it's basically Colorado and the Western part of Canada, that is our grid. There's not a lot of interconnectivity beyond that to the rest of the country. That is something where there's more and more opportunity to look at. There's a lot of wind and solar potential down through these states, right in the middle of the country, with very little transfer capability to the West. And so when we refer to the grid, generally, when we talk about it, we're referring to the Western interconnect, which is the Western part of the United States. So how do we contribute? How do we play into the grid? EWEB contributes 0.12% as far as generating and putting electrons into the grid. That does not include Bonneville. Bonneville allocates us some here, about 245 average megawatts. We generate on our own as EWEB, another 116, 120 or so. These, these numbers vary a little bit with hydro conditions, with wind conditions and other things, but those are typical numbers. We should feel good about what we do contribute. Hydro, wind, solar, not a lot of solar, some thermal. Those thermal, by the way, are, are COGEN, and in many cases, they're considered renewables by the state of Oregon. And I'll, I'll get to some of those definitions in a minute. But what EWEB has done here, I think, is a pretty good job of saying the resources that we're responsible for. We've tried to, to consider a number of different factors, and carbon is one of those. And so even though it's a very small percentage, what we've put in, what we put into the grid, if we had a pool in the backyard, the water we'd be dumping in there, the few buckets would be clean water. Now, it does all mix together. It all mixes together, and we pull out a little more than that, 0.28%. Again, this is a huge grid. That's, and so if we dumped a few gallons of clean water into the pool, what we, what we're drinking from the pool, it's not going to be the same quality that we dumped into it. And so just because it's such a big interconnected system. So talk a little bit about carbon as well, carbon and decarbonization. And one of the things that is an important reminder is that a number of different areas and studies have shown that there's really four main categories to deep decarbonization across the U.S. You see some of them here that you recognize. Energy efficiency and conservation, electrification's part of this, low-carbon supplies and different kinds of fuels. And then a number of different other things related to, to gases and new technology. Where EWEB tends to play the most is in, you know, some of these categories of energy efficiency and conservation. And also where we have at least going forward over the next decade or so, because of those resource decisions, ensuring that we're still contributing to low-carbon electricity to the grid as far as, you know, what's our responsibility. We also have some secondary things that we're working on. Here's one, the renewable hydrogen project. I'll talk a little bit about that. Electrification of passenger vehicles, that's one where EWEB does, has a number of different forms of incentives. And then a hybrid heat pump gas technology is one that we're starting to look at more and more, which is what's the most efficient delivery of energy to, to a building? And it could be a combination of using a heat pump, which is very efficient under electric conditions. But there are some conditions under peaking or very cold weather where it might be more efficient to use a gas furnace. And there's a combination technology opportunity there. Then there's some, some additional areas, electrification, further electrification. We do talk about kind of smart electrification and what that means. We also look at replacing some sort of potential gases. Some of you know this already, some of you don't. One of the insulating gases we use in switch here is SF6, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. It's used as an insulator, a spark suppressant. It's 23,000 times more potent than, than CO2. And so we actually are part of an EPA program to monitor that. But those are things that we're, we look for opportunities to replace that kind of usage and application. When it becomes available, right now, it's, it's not readily available. So we play in a number of these categories, some more than others. And some have more potential than others going forward as well. And one thing about carbon is, is when matters in, in carbon, there's a number, and it's kind of interesting when people start talking about carbon intensity, because part of this is will the real number please stand up? There are so many different carbon intensities depending on how you're looking at this, when you're looking at this. We have peak versus average numbers here for EWEB. The Northwest Power Pool region is one that is, for the most part, the Northwest with a couple provinces in Canada, a little bit into Utah and Montana, Idaho. So it's a little smaller than the Western interconnect, a little more concentrated in the Northwest. But you can see the ratio between peak and average. You know, in, in our portfolio, if we go out to the grid to deal with a peaking issue, that is 17 to 19 times dirtier electricity than our average carbon intensity. So these all have some kind of multiplying factors. In fact, in the future, if you look at projections and decarbonizing the grid further, which is, which is great news, there's still a pretty significant difference between average and peak from a carbon intensity perspective. And these are what our curves look like. They're, they're seasonal month by month. And then, you know, this is maybe a typical day where we peak in the morning and then we peak in the evening. Kind of have two peaks throughout the day. Depends a little bit, winter and summer, those, those two, and whether that's spring break or not, or whether people in school or not, goes to the number of variables to that. I wanted to explain something that sometimes you hear about, which is the net position. Again, this is part of the, will the real number please stand up? Here's our, here's our portfolio. If you looked at, this is EWEB's average across the year. We have total generation and then we have average consumption. And this is EWEB. We do generate more than we consume on average over the course of a year. You start to break that down a little bit, and you go, oh, look, we've got lots of hydro. We do have some nuclear. That comes through our Bonneville contract. We have some wind, as you saw, some thermal, and then we go out to the market to get, to do balancing throughout the, throughout the year. And so, hey, look at this. Based on this number, look at all this hydro, nuclear, that's carbon-free. So wow, we're 90% carbon-free according to this average net view of it. But there's a little more to the story. Sometimes we're in a surplus condition, which is, wow, this is even better. Our consumption's dropped. Hydro conditions are really good. Maybe this is the spring, still have nuclear and wind. Now, wow, we're, we're 100%, no, no, actually, we're 120% of carbon-free this, this time. So let's bank this. Let's, let's just bank it. We don't need it now. Let's, let's bank it because here's a different condition. Here's a peak condition where maybe hydro is not performing as well, consumption is high. This might be a winter evening. What do we have to do? We have to go to market. And so we've, we've banked all this really good, clean, carbon-free so that we don't have to address this sort of ugly dirty market here. And hey, we averaged out, our net position is 90% carbon-free. So which of those numbers do you really go on? And it's, it's going to depend on whether you call yourself net neutral or net clean or whether you want to look at this hour by hour, month by month, day by day, all the time. So there's some definitions to, to work through. And some of those definitions are pretty interesting, and they all get interchanged oftentimes. So renewable energy, and in fact, we have people that encourage us, rightfully so, to make a, you know, just transition to, to renewable energy. I don't think when they show up and say that, they are telling us to go buy more Senecas. I just, I don't get the impression that that's what they mean. Although the state of Oregon includes COGEN, and in fact, Seneca generates renewable energy credits for EWEB. It's a, it's considered renewable by the state of Oregon. But I don't think people, when they show up, they tend to say, oh, when they say, go, go more renewable, that that's actually what they mean. For the most part, I think they mean wind and solar, probably the two big ones. And sometimes hydro, sometimes not. Hydro is, is one that's not considered renewable by the state of Oregon. At least what's called legacy hydro, which is hydro that was built before 1995. And there's some, there's some good reasons for that when the state did that. But it is, in essence, carbon-free. And then you have these 100% clean. You know, here's, here's this net again, net 100% clean, where your, your annual energy generated by carbon-free resources is equal to or greater than the energy you consumed. So that means you can overproduce at times and buy or use carbon-based fossil-based energy at other times. So this, this netting is something that we, we need to pay attention to. We need to be intentional with it. Carbon neutral, again, this is kind of looking at the same kind of thing over a period of time. And then carbon-free, you know, wind, solar, hydro, nuclear. Nuclear is, is in essence, carbon-free by some of those definitions. And so the key question that all of this raises, and it raises it not just when you're talking in an open setting, but when you're talking with legislators and about rulemaking in, in laws. When they say 100% clean, does that mean on average over a year? Or does that mean every hour that you produce this, you need to be 100% clean? There, there is a huge difference in, in those particular cases. So over what time period really does matter in these definitions? A couple, and this is really small, I don't expect you to read this and memorize it. There's, there's a couple of points in here. I find it interesting that a number of utilities are, are starting to develop programs that are, are specific. You know, here's Puget Sound Energy. They have a program called Beyond Net Zero. We just talked about net, so this is beyond net zero. So that's 120% clean. I'm not quite sure what that, that means. And here's SMUD, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, absolute zero by 2030. So that's, I'll, I'll talk about that one a little bit more. Here's Portland General Electric, Oregon's Clean Energy Future. What is interesting about all of these cases, and in fact, most of the cases that I have found, not all of them, but a lot of them, where you see, we're going to be this amount by this date, follow a starting point that is really not that good. The starting point, you know, look, look at Puget Sound Energy. Coal is 35%, natural gas 31%. That's a huge part of their portfolio already. Approximately 50% of SMUD's is fossil-based. Remember, EWEB's, what we're considering is about 90% carbon-free already. So some of these are talking about getting to 90% by 2030. They're getting to neutral in some fashion by 2045. What I found interesting about SMUD with this, with this absolute zero by 2030, they very specifically highlighted how they were going to do that to get to 90%. Then they self-admittedly said, we don't know how we're going to get from 90% to 100%. Which to me, that's, that's important because EWEB's at 90%. So they've, they've identified how to get to where we are, which is how I looked at it. And some of this, you'll see, even very specifically, they're talking about repurposing their natural gas fleet to use biofuels, to use other kinds of fuels. So in some cases, move more to peaking. All of these scenarios also do involve more investment in wind and solar, which is incredible, which is a really important part of the equation. So if you look at the economics of going to 100%, you'll look at this, these reduction numbers, by the way, 80% reduction. That's 80% below 1990 levels. Those are the original targets from the Kyoto Accords. And a lot of the standards that you hear about is we want to reduce to some significant level below 1990. You can see, this is the starting point for the Northwest region. Some of the other regions are even worse, you know, and even you, if you looked at, at SMUD's example, they're, they're probably not even to this point yet. The good news is, this is pretty affordable as a region, as an industry, to get to this 80%, even 90% levels of 90% reduction means that it's 95% of, you know, carbon-free, or about 90%. These are very affordable. When you start to get past that, the costs become incredibly high. And most of that cost is because you're building out wind and solar so much, and then you're curtailing their use because you have to build them out for reliability purposes. The, the good news is also what's facilitating this, and this is, this is, there's two lines here, the, the yellow line, and then you kind of see a blue line here. Those are, those are the prices that utilities are paying when they go out and, and get either wind contracts or solar contracts. So the price is coming down per kilowatt hour, per megawatt hour of those produced. Depends on the purpose, though, and the timing of those, and what's called capacity. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I talk about reliability. There are, we are starting to see some land use challenges. So there's good news. There's, there's lots of technology advances, there's lots of opportunity, cost improvements, wind and solar. There's still and will continue to be increased land use challenges. They're starting to see that in the desert southwest already, where various protected habitats in the desert as well. So a lot of land use. If, if you were to go to that net zero level that I just showed, the cost curve, the footprint for that would be eight to 37 times the land area of Seattle and Portland combined. It, it starts to take up a lot of land use for wind, in particular, solar arrays, not, not counting distributed solar on rooftops. But just you look at utility-scale projects, it takes a lot of land use. And it also takes a lot of transmission. These circles here on this one are where you see the highest concentration of wind generation in the Northwest. The challenge with that is, is that's not where it's used. It's, it's used typically along the High Five Corridor all the way up and down. And so transmission, the getting of, and the connecting of where it's generated to where it's consumed is an ongoing challenge. And transmission lines don't just get built very quickly. It takes, in some cases, decades to get those built. And so, again, I'm not sure whether that's a land use issue or not, but there's a lot of issues associated with transmission. There's some really good news on the wind and solar front. There's also some challenges with land use and, and with transmission. So reliability, reliability is incredibly important. We've, we've seen what happens when there's reliability issues, like in Texas. Also last summer in California, they had rolling blackouts in California. I'm often asked, could that happen here? Absolutely, it could happen here. What we're seeing across the West is a retirement of coal plants. And that, that's, that's really great news from a carbon perspective. When you take out a coal plant, let's just say you take out a 100-megawatt coal plant, you don't replace it with 100 megawatts of wind and solar. A coal plant is for what's called a firm resource, it's count on you dispatch it. You have to replace it with more wind and solar to get the same amount of reliability, depending on where and what time of day and the rest of the resource. That could be five, six, eight times more than what you took out. So you have to overbuild those to get the same amount of resource. We are taking out, you know, over this timeframe, you know, now through 2030, 4,000 megawatts of coal out of the Northwest region. Again, EWEB's about an average 300, so that's many times more, and that has to be replaced. This, this information comes from the Pacific Northwest Utility Coordinating Council in their regional forecast they do every year. They go, they talk to a number of different utilities and they add up all these numbers, and they present them to the Power Conservation Council. And you can see the deficits now starting to form pretty, this is the winter, this is the summer, 2022, 2023. This, this is a concern for the Northwest. This is called a resource adequacy concern. This is called a resource adequacy concern. What that basically means, you take all these different conditions, some of them not great conditions for generation, low hydro, for example, the wind doesn't blow for a week. You look at a lot of different iterations of a model, and then it comes up with percentages of which you could have issues, you just wouldn't be able to supply load. And those percentages are getting higher, especially in this 2022 to 2025 kind of timeframe. So there is concern. EWEB is working with a number of other utilities on a resource adequacy program, which would allow utilities to work each other, work with each other across the region to figure out and secure resources at certain times to make sure that, with certain capacity. So that's something we are actively involved in. And this is kind of an example of what happens. I won't go through all this, but black line is load. You can see pretty high load over a few days. This is kind of a typical, maybe winter day, your hydro conditions and your wind conditions are such that, in fact, what happens a lot of times in the Northwest is you get a high-pressure system, move over and stay, and it gets cold. It'll get cold across the region, and because it sits there, the wind doesn't blow much. And so it's not uncommon that it gets really cold and the wind doesn't blow. And hydro, if hydro conditions are not good, you get this deficit here. You need to have some kind of dispatchable energy to be able to fill that deficit. I'll just answer this question a little bit. I've been asked a number of times, "What are you doing with hydrogen? Why does that matter? Why is EWEB interested in that?" And I'll try to keep it pretty simple and high level. But everybody, you remember this chart from the very beginning, and this is a simpler version of it. And what I talked about before was kind of coal going away. Natural gas still in the picture here, supplying, part of the supply for electricity. But we're building out wind and solar. And for carbon and climate change reasons, we should be building out more wind and solar. But that means, because of reliability, there's times that it's going to be curtailed. You're going to have to build up so much that there will be times you'll have surplus, unless you create a use for it. So this is a different form of wasted energy from my perspective. And I just try to represent those here with these two kind of lines coming out of solar and wind. The idea from an economic perspective, and also from a decarbonization perspective, is to find a use for that. And one of the uses is to run it through an electrolyzer and create renewable hydrogen. Basically, you're using wind and solar and its surpluses to create a different form of energy, which is hydrogen. It's a way of storing that energy for either direct generation, infusion into the gas line, of which you see this is now not natural gas, it's just gas. You can, there's some direct blending that you could use. And then also down here, transportation for large vehicles, particular buses and large semis where you have a fuel cell that can go a lot further, refuel a lot faster, it's a lot lighter. Batteries for these big vehicles are incredibly heavy. And then also mix that back with some kind of carbon capture, to then truly create a synthetic gas instead of natural gas. The whole point here would be to take the fossil out of natural gas, take the fossil in this out, make it no longer a natural gas. That's the intent. The reason we're interested from an electric perspective is, we still probably need gas in our fleet for reliability purposes, for peaking purposes. It would be that much better if it wasn't a fossil fuel. And then also, if we really want to build out wind and solar affordably, we need to find a secondary market for the surplus that's created when you're not using it, when you're not needing it. So both sectors, the gas sector and the electricity sector, need each other in order to decarbonize. That's the reason that we're interested in it. Some of this technology exists, some of it exists but is not scaled yet, and some of it needs some work, especially some of the carbon capture stuff. So this is, I only mention it because people ask, "Why are you doing this? Why are you interested in it?" It's to create a secondary market so that we can build out more wind and solar and do it affordably and reliably. That's the reason. So I want to end with a little bit, I'm not going to go through all of these. I think, you know, you had the presentation ahead of time, hopefully you got a chance to look at some of these. There are some pretty exciting opportunities related to climate and energy that we're participating in, that we see in the future. Some of these, continued energy efficiency and conservation. The most carbon-free energy is the energy you don't use. If you can be more efficient and do it at the right times and avoid using it, that's actually the best of all worlds. It doesn't look like energy consumption is going to go down in the next several decades. It's the way economies work, the way, including our economy around digital devices, telecommunications, server farms, digital, the digital world is driving a lot of energy consumption. Great design, expanding some of our programs, carbon sequestration programs, green power programs, looking for secondary markets. And then there's a lot of things with federal regulations that we continue to push and technology we continue to push. The goal is to help our community and also do it in a way that we can align our resources in a way that we can be, have carbon-free, as carbon-free, reliable, affordable resources as possible going forward as we get into some of these decisions in the 2025 to 2028 range. This is just a reminder where we started, the plan and the questions, and probably talked long enough, I went over a little bit, so I apologize. Maybe gave you enough to talk about and some ideas to spread around. President Schlossberg, with that, I'll turn it back to you and the board can dive in as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation. I'm sure that we have a lot of questions. And so I might start the queue with Matt or Sonia, just so I can keep track of my screen. So I don't know if one of you wants to jump in, or you raise your hand, Sonia?
I did raise my hand. But if Matt wants to go, he can go first.
You go first, Sonia.
Okay, all right. So a couple of quick comments and questions. One, on the transmission side, I was curious why on the map that you showed, can't remember what slide it was on, but there was a map, Nevada is like completely blank. Seems like they're a bit closer to us than connecting with some of the others, and probably have a broad wealth of ability to do solar, but it doesn't seem to be connected to anything. Is there a reason behind that? And part of why I ask is that if we are looking at regionally and supporting the utility to work regionally, or even looking at expanding our own, you know, capabilities, I know at times we have owned various resources in other states, but anyway, just what's up with Nevada?
What's up with Nevada? I don't have the map right in front of me, I guess I can pull up again. It could be that some of the lines there, Sonia, were lower voltage lines. There is increasing solar in Nevada. Most of that goes into California directly. It doesn't come to the Northwest. California has some different challenges. Solar is very prevalent in the desert southwest in California, probably more than most places in the country. Their challenge happens to be in the evening, when it's hot in the summer, and the sun goes down, it's still hot, your solar goes away. Batteries haven't come into play yet. This is an area where batteries can make a significant difference in that few hours after the sun goes down. But I'd like to look at specifically Nevada, Commissioner Carlson, to answer your question directly, and I can do that.
That's fine. My other questions were real quick, and then I'll make a couple of comments. So didn't touch on wave energy at all during the presentation. I know it also asked a little bit about solar pricing, and I was hoping that we could get a little bit of an update on solar pricing. I didn't see any of that in here, though. I understand that, it seems like the goal of the presentation is really to say, "Hey, look at, we want to go to more renewable resources." I mean, that is a goal, we've outlined it in our strategic plan. How do we get there? I mean, building new resources is expensive, even if you're looking at kind of nearby regions, because the transmission is expensive. There isn't anything in that region already. So we're a tiny little drop in the bucket. What can we do from a strategic perspective to help impact that? And it seems like, you know, a lot of it was really focused on the hydrogen capability to make a battery, to store any of this other renewable energy that we might make. So what I took away a little bit, too, is like there are other resources out there that we also haven't discussed, maybe in future, maybe they're just not as viable. But I know wave energy is something that's out there, we have the ocean that's closer. I don't know how viable, you know, that is and connecting to that. And also, we have from the kind of field switching of sorts, if we're looking at, you know, either creating hydrogen or another opportunity in maybe cleaning the natural gas system up to turn that into more of a battery, is capturing the gas that comes off of waste. And I'm curious what the capacity of the region is, and how much is kind of like low-hanging fruit to capture that as a region to get another resource that reduces the carbon, but also gives us another opportunity to get that resource that is more carbon-neutral. So those are some of the things that I've kind of thought of through the presentation. I'll leave it there, and I'll come back to the questions after we get to it.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of really important points. I believe that as we go forward, that we're going to need a mix of resources with different characteristics. And what I mean by that is, there is nothing that says that wave energy is off the table, it's still evolving. Solar and wind are viable choices. You have to have a mix, though, that meets climate goals, but also meets your reliability and affordability goal. I think we're in a pretty good position to do that, and I don't want to get too hung up on the hydrogen piece of it. There's a lot of work to do in energy efficiency and conservation. There's a lot to do in what I would call demand response, which is to address the issue of timing. Given that the grid is dirtier at some times as opposed to others, I think that's AMI technology and different products and services to encourage people to use energy when not only is it cheapest, but it's also the cleanest. So these are direct things that EWEB can do. The cleaning up of the gas system is not necessarily our responsibility. I do think that electric utilities and gas utilities ultimately can help each other to decarbonize. That's the answer to the question when people ask why we're doing this. There is some mutual benefit in that, but there's also a role for the electric utility, and then there's a role for the gas utility. The renewable piece of natural gas in the state of Oregon is somewhere between 7% and 18% of the, I'll say, natural gas consumption in the state of Oregon could be what's called renewable natural gas. Now, part of when you renew it, you're capturing methane as opposed to CO2, so there's some additional benefit there. But it's certainly not going to, renewable natural gas is not going to replace the natural gas consumption in the state of Oregon, given the percentages that I just mentioned. That was an inventory study done by the Oregon Department of Energy, by the way.
Okay. I didn't see, that wasn't something that was provided in our materials.
No, I did not mention that. There have been comments about renewable natural gas, and there is an inventory that's potential, is something between, like I said, 7% and 18% or somewhere in that range, maybe 20% at the most. If it's capturing methane, there's additional benefit to that because of methane's potency versus CO2, but it depends what you're capturing. But it's not going to replace the entire state of Oregon natural gas consumption.
Okay, those are my questions. I'll come back to the questions to ponder after I hear others respond. Thanks.
Great.
Can you hear me okay? Great. Thanks, Commissioner Schlossberg, for running this meeting, herding the cats, as it were. Thank you too, Frank, for the presentation. There's a lot here, and we probably won't have enough time for all the questions and discussion. So I hope we can find some ways to ensure that we can all get on the same page. I know it's going to take probably a few iterations to, so that we have a shared understanding of all the trade-offs and the issues that are being surfaced. I also want to say thanks to the technical staff who put this hybrid steam together. It's really nicely done, and from where I sit, it feels really, really smooth. And thanks to the staff who are running the production of this meeting for the public. A few points, just to completely agree with you, Frank. From everything I understand, we're going to need renewable hydrogen for storage. And I think there's a big role for EWEB to play. We're already stepping out in that direction, working with Northwest Natural to do some pilot work on generating renewable hydrogen. So I'm grateful that we're doing that, and I feel like we should continue in that direction because that's going to be important technology for us to develop to make the rest of the renewable systems work. Yes, we're going to need synthetic gas and/or renewable gas, and we're going to need to save those energy sources for those sectors that are hard to electrify, like heavy industry and freight. And my only point here is that, from my perspective, and again, my understanding of what's required to get us to a more renewable energy future, we need to electrify everything that can be electrified, which includes, in our climate, includes electrifying home heating and home water heat, the things that frequently are using natural gas right now, so that we can save any renewable natural gas or synthetic natural gas for those sectors that are hard to electrify. Yes, there's a ton of opportunity with energy efficiency, and I look forward to EWEB continuing to lead on that front. And I'm going to save my policy questions for later, actually, so I'll leave that. A couple of questions or clarifying points for you, Frank. You mentioned land use for renewable energy, which is certainly an issue, and you pointed out a few of them, that there are some areas of land we just can't use for renewable energy generation. So there's going to be some work there as we expand renewable generation. But it's also worth noting that there's a tremendous footprint of our current fossil-fuel-powered system, right? When we look at coal, for example, it's not just the coal-fired power plant, but the huge coal mines in, all over the country, the flat mountaintops in West Virginia, et cetera, that have an enormous footprint that goes beyond just the generating facility. And I'm, then I'll just ask one question, and then I'll turn it over to somebody else to pick up from there. Electricity versus all energy. If you could just say a few things, Frank, about the difference of going to like a 90% renewable electric sector versus a 90% renewable energy sector, where we're looking at both transportation and housing, and how those work? Because my understanding is that when we look at all energy... Because my understanding is that when we look at all energy, increasing, and especially electrifying houses and other buildings and the transportation sector, it increases our flexibility and provides opportunities. Can you speak to that?
I think so, and I'm not exactly sure about the interrelationship that you're asking about. I will say that I've always felt, and I think EWEB in the past has been supportive of looking at clean energy policies that were economy-wide. And some of that is because when you look at some of those big areas of waste and inefficiency, those are the interactions between the different sectors. And I ultimately think, Matt, that this is going to come down to eventually an issue of efficiency. There's going to be a limited amount of energy, and then there's going to be all this use, these different uses that society wants to have. And, you know, we're only dealing with the electricity sector. But I also think that when you look at this, you have to say, okay, what are we doing that's the most efficient that we can do when we have interactions with other sectors? What's the efficiency choice? Is it, you know, I think eventually, all those systems will work together. There's, and I think you and I have had this conversation, the issue of timing with this transition is important also because we don't want to do a couple of things. We don't want to lose the affordability and the reliability of the electric grid. That would shut down electrification probably faster than anything. And so I don't know exactly about flexibility. Maybe we can look at that a little bit further. But I think ultimately, we're going to want to look at this from an efficiency perspective and make sure that we are being flexible, environmental, affordable, reliable. And there may be areas that we want to push harder than others to make that happen. But I do think all of these systems eventually work together, and it'll come down to, I think, the most efficient system will be the way that society ultimately should go. What are we using the most efficiently? And when I say that, from an environmental, from a triple bottom line perspective, what's the most efficient from a triple bottom line perspective? I can elaborate at some point in the future more on that, Matt, just to make sure I understand what you're asking.
No, I think you hit on most of it. Yeah, thanks, Frank.
All right, John Borowski and then John Brown.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions. So one of the questions I had was, one of the slides said we're going to lose 4,000 megawatts of coal over the next few years. And in our community, we have values, certain values, but other communities that are producing energy may have different values. So my question is, in the areas that are taking off the coal, are they just replacing that with a gas plant? And at what point is it not going to be economical? Or are the lines going to converge so that it's not, doesn't pay to build a gas plant to replace a coal plant? That's the first question.
Yeah, well, it's a, so I'll comment on your first question around, do other communities have different values? Absolutely. We're dealing with, in some cases, the Wild West. There's a big difference between, and you see it in regulations. There's a big difference in the clean standards in Wyoming, for example, versus Oregon. Wyoming, they have no RPS. It's zero. There's no energy following the standard in the state of Wyoming. Now, what utilities are finding, and this is really, I think this is a really important point. If you have an energy source that does not have a fuel cost, and you can run it, you're going to run it before you have another plant, like a gas plant, that has a fuel cost. If you have both, and you have the choice, you're going to go with the free one. A lot of utilities in their planning are looking and saying, if we take out this coal, what do we need to replace it with? For reliability and also for cost. Some of the reason that coal is coming out isn't just because utilities are going, oh, it's great for the environment. It's expensive now compared to gas. Gas has an advantage over coal from a carbon perspective. You still need gas in the system for reliability. But most utilities are starting to look at this, and they go, we're going to build out these renewables. We're going to deal with demand response. We're going to look at storage. So they're planning this, knowing that even if they build gas, they're going to run it less. They're only going to run it when they need it. So that's what we're starting to see happen, is they're not just taking out one and putting in another. They're taking out coal, and they're looking at a mix. We are concerned because they're taking out coal faster than they're putting in other stuff across the region. I say them, us, as an industry. That's why you see some of those deficits that we're concerned about. But ultimately, they'll build out renewables, they'll build out gas, and the whole point is gas will be used less, only for when you need it.
And that makes sense to build a gas plant and not run it?
No, not really. That's part of the challenge. Building out capacity and then curtailing it is very expensive. It's part of the reason some of the opportunities that we talked about are looking at more organized markets that can price, let's say, gas or some kind of fast ramping resource based on its availability and not just how many megawatt hours you get out of it. Right now, most of the markets charge like we charge our customers, kilowatt hours. And if you don't run it, you don't make money. And so that's an issue that the industry needs to work on. And that's part of when we talk about market development, some of these things, resource adequacy, paying into the system to have some of those available when we need them. That's part of that development. But right now, it's like you described.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of things that I see are, there's long range, medium range, and short range. I think that the hydrogen is a longer-range thing, but it's something that I'm very excited about. You know, wind and solar, I would say is medium range. And then for EWEB, where we have control, I think conservation is going to be our low-hanging fruit and our quickest area to get to. The one problem that I see with that is trying to incentivize the rental market. Because in the city of Eugene, 50% of the homes are rentals. And there is no incentive right now for a landlord to go through and do winterizing when they're not paying the bill. And so I think if we can figure out that challenge in some way to figure that, to incentivize landlords and property owners to weatherize and deconservation on the rental properties, that's where, an area that I would like to look into and see what are the opportunities for us to do that. It's hard to do when you're not paying the bills to, you know, say, put, especially in some of these older multifamily units that have windows from the '70s. Put windows in a multifamily unit is going to be tens and tens of thousands of dollars for something that they're not going to reap the benefit of. So that's an area that I'm looking for any sort of solutions, obviously, with that.
I think that's, I liked how you characterized the immediate, the mid-range, and the long range. I would classify certain things in the immediate, energy efficiency, conservation. Demand response is another one because of the timing issues. We have to size infrastructure. We have to buy resources based on peak. If we can lower that peak, shift it around, we get a carbon benefit, we get an infrastructure benefit, we get a resource and an advantage there. So I think that's in the kind of the immediate to midterm range, and then resource decisions. It is a challenge, given the housing stock that we have and the status with, you know, it is more than 50% is rentals. How do you create pull in the market is part of the answer to that. How do you create competition for including those energy bills or the utility bills in general, water, electricity, or gas, whatever, in the price that creates competition? That's a big challenge. I don't have the answers to that.
We'll go find them. Thank you.
Hello, John Bean. Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you. Very educational. Just a comment, John. SMUD, we looked into that at an NWPBA conference a few years ago about, SMUD has an excellent program for conservation on their rental pool. So we'll have that discussion because there's some opportunity there. I agree. A couple of quick questions, Frank. When's the last time a transmission line was approved? How long did it take? And knowing how, like Keystone and Jordan Cove and things, the opposition wasn't, you know, is because of the product they were carrying, but those were, you know, surface transmission facilities. And all this new capacity has to be above ground and probably, to me, much more impactful on the environment. What is the probability of permitting a new transmission line from these new sources at the timing?
The timeliness, the one that I'm most familiar with is the one that was, that's still in process in eastern Oregon, out in the remote part of eastern Oregon. And I believe that started 15 years ago.
15 years?
Yeah. And they haven't broken ground yet, and they haven't gotten all their permits yet. There is definitely a knot in my backyard, he's to that. As there is wind, even offshore wind is another one we didn't talk about. But, you know, getting, people don't necessarily want to see wind turbines off the coast, even though, you know, there's potential there.
And then your slide on the coal, the retirement of coal capacities and things, and you showed a deficit on, you know, like 2024, I think it was, that we're going to have some brownouts and things you're really concerned about. Were those statistics created with electrification of the transportation sector? Are those deficits, assuming that we've electrified the transportation sector in the next two to four years? Or are those deficits, they'll change in how we live and act?
So the numbers I showed there were from a survey of utilities and their planning process. It does not include very much if any electrification.
And then my comment is that, you know, as far as, you know, we got the big three questions. I'll get to those later. But I think, besides what John, the other John Bean talked about, the rental pool, I think electrification of the transportation sector is huge, and it's something that we can do. I don't know how we're going to get that. You know, I don't understand the logic of, we're trying to get people to shift to electricity, but if we make it unreliable, less reliable than it is now and much more expensive, that's a hard sell, and that defies, for me, defies logic. And so that steep curve and that last 5% to 10% is like the reliability. We can get 95% reliability, we get 100% cost you 50 times more. So that's going to be a challenge for me to go into a mode where we make something much more expensive, unless let's be liable. But we're trying to say, but please believe us, you know, we're going to have to find that balance, and that's going to be a challenge for us, so.
Yeah, and I think our electrification study showed that the electrification of transportation is definitely something that, as from a system, we can handle from a resource perspective, we can handle. It surprisingly doesn't use a lot of energy. If everybody charges at the same time, that can be a capacity problem. But that's where demand response and time of use comes in. If we can work with people to charge off peak times, that's definitely a help. But, you know, we've been looking at a number of different incentive programs and infrastructure programs specifically around transportation because also because some of the clean fuel laws in Oregon are changing, and we will have to allocate some of the funds we get for that program specifically to transportation electrification. So it aligns and supports what you said. That's a big opportunity. It's manageable for us, and it has a big impact on the community, so.
Yeah, the slide that you showed, how we can really, we can get a real bang for the buck by doing that. And then, like you say, if we can get people to charge their EVs at night when we have a surplus, during the surplus times. And having participated in that time of use study, it's really kind of fascinating how much energy you can save when you're consciously aware of saying, I really don't want to run my dishwasher at 6:00 in the evening or run my clothes dryer at 7:00 a.m. It's just a conscious effort, and hopefully we can get through all that.
It saves money, and I think what I tried to point out today was it saves carbon. If you can get consumers to consume electricity when there's lots of sun and wind, that's a great thing. We need to align those two. The challenge California has is basically they've got a lot of solar now, and when the sun goes down, they have a problem because it's still hot, it's still in the summer. That is where batteries, a three- or four-hour battery makes a big difference in California. A three- or four-hour battery in Oregon won't help. It's, we're looking at days where the wind doesn't blow, and the sun is sort of intermittent, especially in the winter when we peak. So transportation, big opportunity, I think.
One last, I've got 30 seconds. It's like proliferation of these, and streaming, and server farms. Is that an impact? I mean, because it's all peak, and everybody streams, and everybody looks at videos and things like that on their phones, and they think it's netless. But is that really a thing that really does affect the peaking and things such as that because of server farms?
I wouldn't say it's necessarily peaking, per se. What's the proliferation of technology, including cell phones, streaming services, social media? That one of the largest areas of growth for load or energy in the Northwest has been server farms. And, you know, it's interesting because part of me wants to say, if you really want to help the environment, don't do this. Good luck with that, though, because we all are sort of addicted to this. And also, you know, you have to look at a lot of other external things. You know, you, John, rode your bike here. You know, that's important. Where you get your products from. You know, the largest generator of carbon in the world is China. And look at how much we consume from China. It's more than double the U.S. So all of those things are going to matter. What we have to come back to is, as a utility, what can we do to really help facilitate, take ownership in what we're doing, and then how can we help our community in a way that keeps us portable, keeps us reliable, all those things that you pointed out?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, one of the great things about being in charge is I get to listen to everybody's questions first, but then that, most of my questions get answered along the way. So I'm just going to maybe jump right into those questions that you put up because I have some thoughts about that. I'm really curious about, given what we can control, right? We can talk about the grid and the interconnectedness and all that stuff. But we're a small utility in a pretty small city. Where would we, what areas do you see that we're going to get the most bang for our buck realistically? And how can we leverage other partners to get that? I think you might say, maybe you already said, efficiency, demand response, and rates are things that we can really control. And to address what John Borowski said about efficiency with the rental housing market, we're trying to work with the city to partner on that because we can't do that all by ourselves. We haven't gotten very far. So anybody from the city that's entered into this work session, we really want to work on that goal and figure out how to make that happen. Anyway, I'm starting to ramble now, but I guess my question is, given what we can control, what will get us the most bang for our buck in the short term, I would say?
So are you asking me? Okay, so I really, the focus on energy efficiency and conservation is probably the highest impact the soonest. Even with the rental situation, there's still a lot of potential across the community. To me, that's first and foremost. Finishing our AMI infrastructure and the data management of that so that we can get into products and services that create demand response programs, that's, I would say that's in the near term also. Depending on who you talk to, it might be near term or midterm, but that is something that facilitates a lot of discussion, even around time of use. You know, we're talking about rate design, fixed costs, variable costs, you know, all these kinds of things. You have to have the programs and the products in place to facilitate that. So I think that's a really big near-term opportunity. I think looking at expanding some of our green power I think looking at expanding some of our green power programs to include carbon sequestration, which aligns with the watershed work also, that's like a double win across the utility. I think expanding those, giving people like Pac Tech the opportunity to buy renewable energy credits from their local electricity supplier is something we're talking to them about, but we don't have a program yet for it. Those, I think, our customers would really appreciate. Again, that starts to expand into regional influence. We actually have a lot of influence on the region. Let's do things that help the region also. And so those are kind of things that, I actually had the list of all these sort of sec, you know, secondary market, that's mid-long term, you're probably right, John. You know, the other thing across, you know, we are looking at hybrid, gas-electric potential infrastructure. It gets back to your point from a consumer's position. If you put in a combination furnace heat pump, where you have heat pump most of the time and you only have gas when you need it, you have the same issue. How do you recover from, you know, how do the economics work on that? That's a study. But I think transportation electrification. Also, probably water heating is what I would call smart electrification. I do have a definition for smart electrification. It includes a number of characteristics. Some of them include the economics, the not building on peaks and some of these other things. But I probably gave you too much already. The challenge is, we can't do everything. So we're going to have to figure out which of those are really the priorities. But energy efficiency and conservation is high up there. Getting, setting ourselves up for demand response is another one. Expanding our green power programs and our sequestration. But those are things I think we can do pretty well.
So what I would love to see, and obviously it's not up to me, it's up to the board, but something that I would love to see is like taking those top three things and coming up with some measurable goals that we can really, I don't know, that we can do in the short term. Because I think that some of the stuff we're just tipping away at and we're getting there. But I think it'd be really awesome to have some short term things that we can target. And, you know, at the end of, I don't know what short term is, three to five years or whatever.
I consider three to five years midterm.
Okay.
So short term is like one to two years. Midterm is three to five. And then stuff beyond that is, it starts to get a little bit fuzzier. I also think that we need to do, we started to do electrification analysis. We did some, we did some look on the system. We're looking at some of the economics now. Really, the most important next step is to look at consumption across our entire customer base. And what I, I mean, in detail, look at peaking forecast economic and climate differences. Because if we do get to a point where we're shopping for energy, so we're going out, maybe Bonneville's part of it, maybe they're not. But at some point, we're going to have to shop for a supplier. And we're going to want to go down the list and say, it's carbon free, it's reliable, you know, all our things, right? But they're going to want to know, what do you need? What do you want? We need to have a very detailed, that's the integrated resource planning process. And the consumption piece is really important part of that. We're going to have to be able to say, here's our specification. We're going to go out to the world and we need this kind of energy. And so that's really important. It's near term because midterm is coming pretty quickly. So that's something that we're, it actually is in the goals already. And some of this is hidden in the operational goals.
Yeah. I'm sure it is somewhere or it's in your head or it's with the executive leadership team. But it'd be great if we had, if we decided that's the direction that we had some.
I think that would be important also because at some point, you want to take this sort of massive list and go, you know, you have to prioritize somewhere. If you don't prioritize, you end up ruining your affordability piece. And also, you don't do anything very well. So I'd rather CS, and if you probably agree, do a few things really well and check those boxes and move on than to fragment ourselves too much.
Okay. So we've got 15 minutes left in our meeting, but I know that everybody wants, everybody still wants to address the policy piece. So I'm not sure if we can do it all in three minutes each or if we should add a little bit of time. We need to see how it goes. Is everyone okay with that? And I was thinking that we would go backwards around the circle to ask the next question. To be fair, if that's okay with everybody. We start with John Brown, go to John Borowski, go to Matt, and then Sonia.
Can you put those questions back up on the screen?
I can. Give me just a second here. I had to find it again. Hold on.
So number one, I don't think we need to change our strategic plan to accommodate the conditions now. I think that when we look at it. The policy opportunities, the board be interested in having that before policies. I think the policies that John Veen mentioned about, you know, about energy efficiency and electrification should continue that we have. And the priorities, I think we ought to reallocate our priorities and make, because it's a triple win. I mean, the people in the rental pool tend to, you know, a lot of them tend to have some different financial capacities than others. And I think that we should reallocate our priorities to put a lot more money in the weatherization and the energy efficiency element there. And also programs on making EVs much more, you know, acceptable. And so we can incentivize chargers at home so we can encourage people to charge at night rather than during the day when they're at work, things such as that. So, and things like that. And then the time of use. I think, I think the time of use that, you know, if you want to run your dishwasher at six o'clock at night, it's going to cost you 12 cents a kilowatt versus six. It's just a, it's a choice that you make. And I think that we ought to go into time of use and things such as that and do it as soon as we get into AMI at that point.
Commissioner Brown, just to follow up real quick. Do you think that as a utility, we should own charging stations? And are those available to the public?
I think the logistics of that are going to be very challenging. I mean, public charging stations, yes. At places like where we can incentivize it, you know, like, you know, like I've said, it's places like the Oakway Mall, the Fifth Street Market, places like that where we could take out a sector and, you know, bring people in and rapid charge and things like that. But as far as owning, you know, individual stations, I'd just leave that up to the consumer.
It wouldn't prevent any commercial organization from doing that or anything.
It's not a bad idea, charging stations. I mean, you know, the Tesla charge is 38 cents or 40 cents a kilowatt to charge. And the pain is six. And so there's a huge incentive there. But I personally don't think we should, the logistics of getting into that. I mean, look at the challenges we've had with implementing AMI. And if we start putting charging stations in, the security and the liability and things such as that, I think at the beginning, let's see how the private sector can handle it, would be my initial reaction. But I haven't really studied that. But if somebody wants to give this presentation, I'll change my mind right now.
Yeah. It just starts to work. We tend to be very infrastructure oriented. And if we could provide infrastructure that the general public can leverage to facilitate further electrification of vehicles, it's just, is it a means to something that's at the end? Even if at some point, we start to roll that into time of use and other things with those, the public charging stations as well. Just a follow up question. I didn't have a specific answer. We've kind of looked at both. There's opportunities potentially for both. But it wouldn't prevent private, commercial.
We'd probably like to do a couple of pilots to see how it works. Because, I mean, our job is to provide water to the people and then how they use it. And, you know, and the same thing with electricity. We bring it to the point of service. And then how they use it, what appliances they use and how they use that is up to the consumer. And if we change that philosophy, we're kind of starting in there. Okay, now do we provide, you know, we have financial incentives for them, but do we actually provide a physical thing? Do we provide a dryer, a hot water heater? No, we don't. We just give them financial incentives to do it. So I'd probably want to draw that.
You could facilitate the investment of someone else in those.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. To incentivize it financially and pay back your credits. I'm all for that. Anything we can get to make this a much more consumable, you know, the transition from going from fuel to electricity is a huge, huge climb. It's not so much for younger generations, but for old people like me, you know, my answer could be, I'm going to hang on to that gas car as long as I can. I mean, be facetious. But seriously, it's going to be a challenge to take millions and millions of vehicles and say, you've got a finite remaining economic life.
Sorry, I just took up all your time.
Go. I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah. For me, the number one, should we change our strategic plan? I don't know if we should change it. I think we could look at it and see if there's areas that might dovetail and supplement it. I'm not real, I'm not familiar enough with it to go in and do wholesale changes to it. I think that there, from what you showed up on the slides, there's opportunities for us to slide in there in the existing strategic plan. Future board policies and opportunities. You know, when you ask that question of John about, should we put in charging stations? Let's think about the areas that EWEB owns, right? We own a bunch of substations. If you put a, if you put a fast charge station at some of our substations outside the fast, you know, it might be something that could be doable. And then the third one, should EWEB reallocate priorities, investments or programs? For me, if we're looking long term at hydrogen as a fuel that we're going to want to change water to oxygen and hydrogen, we need fuel for that. And for me, I think one of our areas that we're going to be coming up with in the next few, well, in the next year or so, is Lieberg-Walterville. And I see Lieberg-Walterville as flow-through power that could be used at nighttime and when the demand's not there to have that clean hydrogen stuff. So that might be an area that I would look at to maybe reallocate some priorities and say, hey, we may spend a little bit upfront, but we've got 20 more years of license on these facilities. And in 15 years, we could make a lot of hydrogen out of those plants. So that would be something I would say on number three.
Okay. Matt.
Sorry. Can you hear me okay? Cool. All right. Thanks for the conversation so far. Yeah, I'm just going to try and jump in here. So I'm trying to pull up my notes. I was taking notes. There they are. All right. A few quick comments and probably not a whole bunch of time for discussion because I know you have two more commissioners or at least Commissioner Carlson has some comment time here too. It won't be a surprise to anyone that I think addressing community-wide carbon emissions swiftly has to be a top priority. Whether or not it's reflected in the strategic plan, I don't know. I, yeah, I think we could update the strategic plan so it's reflected more prominently. And in my opinion, not just electricity, but all energy sources, we already do influence energy use, but beyond just current electricity use. For example, by incentivizing hybrid water heaters that can replace natural gas water heaters. And by hybrid, I mean entered heat pump water heaters that can replace natural gas water heaters. And by incentivizing heat pumps for heating homes that can replace natural gas. And by installing charging stations for EVs. We already influence those other portions of the energy sector and I think we should continue to do so. We, of course, have to do it affordably. But everything I've seen suggests that making a transition off of fossil fuels can be done very affordably and doesn't break the budget. I want to say quickly, thanks to the planning team who conducted electrification study. I would like to see another phase of that electrification study that extends to include both industrial and freight energy use in our area. Because I think that's an important piece of the picture that we probably need to understand over the coming several years. I also feel, and when we talk about policy altogether, I feel like we can and should establish a transition equity goal so that as we look at decarbonizing our community, we're not only not disproportionately affecting marginalized communities, but we also help those communities get into a better place over the course of decarbonizing our community. I know there's more to talk about on this. And then also, not only a decarbonization goal, I feel like we can and should establish a goal for what are, how much carbon comes along with our electricity over different increments of time. So by 2025 and 2030 and 2035, where, how much carbon should our electricity be producing? I think the board should weigh in on a target like that. Not only carbon, but also I think we should have an electrification goal or target. And also, in addition to decarbonization, I think we should have a resilience target of some kind. So perhaps we could identify the portion of electricity that is generated locally, perhaps within a certain radius from our immediate area, or that we have immediate control over so that as we look at disruptions to the energy system, we know that we have control over enough electricity to supply our basic needs. And the last thing, and this is a question for Frank. If we are thinking about setting targets like this for EWEB and the energy purchases, electricity purchases in the future, what's the timeline, what's the right timeline to have targets in place to both inform staff planning efforts, but also negotiations with potential generator, generator sources or other entities that we're purchasing electricity from? That's all my comments and my last question.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Sonia.
Great. Well, thank you all. I really appreciated the conversation. I agreed with much of what was said. I've been, as we've kind of gone through this, I've been thinking about bucketing each category into, you know, what we own, which is where I think, you know, when we talk about that goal, we're at a place where we have 90% of our electricity is clean and that other 10% is much of what we don't own. It's the market purchases. So then that made me start thinking about, okay, so is it realistic to make a goal that the electricity that we offer is 100% renewable? Because we don't influence that other 10%. And we talk about, you know, generation, that's very expensive. Transmission through other states, like, you know, various pointed out, it seems the timeframe is impossible. So for me, it's, I think it's actually saying, we are not going to claim to be 100% renewable. What we're instead going to focus on is that, that outer layer of influence. And I heard that throughout the conversation, but it's not, it's not something, I think it has to be an intentional marketing strategy from the utility to say, we're not going after this and here's why. We have a bigger responsibility to the community. And I think we've, we've under, we've done this throughout some of the policies we've implemented for years, you know, looking at electrification of EVs, fuel switching, things of that nature. But because we don't have that goal, and I really loved what Matt was talking about, about having the different targets for different timelines and even probably different buckets, you know, targets for different buckets. Like, here's what we own, here's what we think we can go after, here's what we influence. And that influence piece is maybe, you know, the rental sector efficiency, which I've been banging the table about for years and years. And I think there are some rental efficiency programs that have been in place a bit, but that's still, we still have a long way to go there. So what's, what's our potential for impact? The cars, you know, when we said natural gas and our responsibility versus our potential to influence? I mean, if we're saying that our, our area of influence is more the goal and here's the different sectors and there are that little pie chart of and here's the different sectors, and there are that little pie chart of what we can influence, and here's the cost for each of those, I think that's where we start being able to say, these are the targets. But we need to know the size and the cost and the timeframe for that area. So, I mean, I don't know how others feel about saying, okay, we're just going to wipe our hands of that 10%, but I think in some respects, based on the affordability and the transmission aspect, it's pretty hard to say that we could go after that. But our real responsibility is to reduce the other part to offset that 10%. Maybe that's something that we could look at. So when I think about the, the first question, I don't, and I can't see the timeframe for some, if there's a timer up, it's gone, I don't know where that went. But the, 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 the first point, I don't think we need to change the strategic plan per se, but the policies that are underlying and supporting that I absolutely would support. I, I think it would be very helpful in another meeting to go through these near-term opportunities and really flesh those out in those buckets that, that we've talked about with targets. And then, I guess I'm also curious for a later time, my, my assumption is that we don't really have a lot of impact on the market, because that's where that 10% is, but do we have, do we have some opportunity there through the regional coordination? It just seems like regional coordination sounds like it's very, that's a very long process. And so, you know, the, the timing on that, granted, people seem motivated, given that there is a resiliency shortage, or a reliability shortage there. So I absolutely think we should be involved in those conversations from a resiliency standpoint, and need to look at that, you know, in near-term, how we're going to support that from E-Web, but that, our, our power to influence that is also, you know, much smaller, because we're a small utility, well, we're a bigger utility, but in the realm of all of the utilities that are involved in that regional planning, that's still a, you know, a piece of the influence. It's not something that at the board level, we can just say, okay, yeah, great, fix that and make it happen. You know, that, that creates a lot of coordination. We need to figure out how much time and effort we can put into that and what we would expect to get from it.
Commissioner Carlson.
Okay, I think I'm out of time.
Commissioner Carlson, I don't think anybody is, from, from a staff perspective or a regional influence perspective, saying that we're giving up on the 10%. I, I think there is a difference in the influence of what, and the difference between what we produce and what we buy off of the market, but there's also a number of standards that are developing, I just saw one today, a renewable energy export standard from another large utility in Canada. A worry that a lot of times happens is that you're going to buy a clean energy product from another utility, and then they will backfill that with something dirtier, which doesn't help the end game. You might feel good about what you bought, but then there's a fallout from that, and so there's some attempts to look at things like that. But I, I think that if we're balancing reliability with affordability, there's, there's no reason why we can't continue to make progress on getting cleaner and cleaner. The, the challenge will be if we get what I would say dumb electrification that starts to push up against the, the fuel switching at the worst times, but everything that we've talked about here hasn't been in that category really, so, so yeah, I don't, I think there's opportunity there.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's really hard to have these discussions and have no costs for any of the items. I mean, I guess that's part of why we have this conversation, do we want to have staff look into those costs or not, and if so, which ones? I mean, the top one in the near-term opportunity is advanced metering infrastructure, which I think we've done, but it's probably the next step of how do we send price signals into the, you know, into the, into the market, and will people respond to them? Maybe I'm wrong on that, but it's hard for me to, to figure out, like, on these near-term opportunities, what those really mean without fleshing out a little bit more of how, what that means specifically for E-Web. This was a very, you know, broad conversation about the regional and the nationwide market and the, the, the focus on, you know, the need to do, to do carbon, carbon reduction, but it feels to me like we really, really, really need to focus on what E-Web specifically can do, where we can influence it, and what we might be able to, I mean, I, I think, you know, what I've heard tonight, we all are in support of going down this, it's just how do we go about making these decisions and choosing the right path, and we're going to need some information that's really targeted at E-Web specifically to move those forward, at least that's my perspective.
And I think, Commissioner Carlson, this, this has to evolve a little bit, so when I think about tonight's discussion, I was really trying to think about if there are policy or high-level directional changes that would need to take place. There's obviously lots of programs that start to fall in under, under policies. If the board said something to the effect that we don't care about something on that list, then, then okay, you start to look at trade-offs, or, you know, one of the things we're going to have to look at is, if there's further incentives in energy efficiency, what do we give up? You know, what, what are the things that we have to deprioritize in order to make that happen? And that's something that's, that management, staff's going to have to come back and take a look at. But, yeah, I was just, some of this is just to get, get a feel for if there's something major that we're missing or that's unexpected from a direction or a policy perspective to start with, and then there's lots of follow-on conversations after this one.
Okay. So, real quick, my answers to these three questions that I haven't already given is, I'm a little bit on the fence if we need to change our strategic plan. I think that, you know, the strategic plan has been worked on for a while and well thought out, and I don't really want to waste time necessarily tinkering with it too much when there's a lot of work that can be done. But I do want to make sure that this work kind of rises to the top, and if it's not delineated in the strategic plan, I'm afraid that it's, it doesn't, it doesn't have the same importance. So, I guess I am, I am supportive of changing the strategic plan or adding something to it, or fleshing something out a little bit more, just to make sure that it stays at that level, because I think this is really important. And in terms of future board policy opportunities, I mean, I think that it seems like everybody is pretty much on the same page in that the types of policies that, what I'm hearing is that people are interested in are things that are, into, durable. So I'm hearing things about, like, setting specific goals towards things, and like I said, you probably all have those goals or it is somewhere, but at least at the board level, I'm not sure that it's, that we've seen goals, we've talked about these things in generalities. And then in terms of reallocating priorities, investments, or programs, I don't know if it's necessarily reallocating, but it seems like maybe shifting some of the focus towards answering these questions. And I liked what Matt said about making sure that there was an equity, equity goal on this, I think that's really important. So, does anybody have anything else that they want to add, or maybe we can talk about, like, what next steps are, like, where do we go from here? Have you gotten Frank's information that you, that you were hoping to get?
I've, I've gotten some, some good feedback. I think the, the interesting thing about policy is that policy generally doesn't get into an annual goal, it's a little bit higher level, which, but that's, that's fine, that's, that's a nuance to me. I, I think I have enough to, to come back to the board with a, a little bit different conversation around how this fits into the, the strategic discussions. And part of the reason I say how does it fit in, there, there are areas where, I'll say, climate work, renewable energy work, resiliency work, all align very nicely. There's other places where you could distract from one thing or another. And so, I want to have a discussion with the board, and probably the best way to do it would be to come back with the very specific strategic things and say, this is something to consider, as opposed to just opening it up and saying, what do you want? Why don't, you know, I'd come back with, here's some things to consider, from a policy and a strategic perspective, that brings some of these issues to light, and probably some trade-offs in there, too, because this, the important thing about a strategy is it also tells you maybe what you're not going to do. And so, all of these things are very attractive, there's lots of things you can be doing. There's, there's also a lot of other things we're already doing, so, which are, which are really valuable as well. So, I think I have enough to come back to the board with some ideas, and then you can shoot them down, or you can twist them around and, and correct and tweak and guide, I mean, that's really what this board is, is for. So, I think I have enough to do that and create some interesting, healthy debates and discussions.
I think one more thing that I think would be helpful as a board as far as policy-wise is figuring out which term we want to use, you know, is it net neutral? Is it, you know, he gave us those four or five different ways of looking at things. If we're setting goals, we have to, as a board, come to a conclusion as to what our benchmark is, and is it this term, this term, or this term? So then, then they can shoot towards that, because if you're just saying renewables, that doesn't help him. So I, I think that's the type of policy thing that you're hoping to get from us at some point, so that he can build those metrics and build the things that we can go against. Am I wrong?
Well, you're absolutely right. I think when, when you start getting into policy, words matter, because there's a history and a meaning to those words, and those who develop it, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the screen, but I'm looking here, too. Those who develop it are the ones who understand its meaning the most, right? So, that's why I think going through some of the strategic pieces is going to be valuable, you know, for, for President Schlossberg, for you, you weren't involved in the last one. I think all those matter, I think the words matter, I think the meaning behind the words matter. I think how the, you know, whether we're looking at this as local versus regional matters, you know, we, we could make a decision that locally helps from a region hurts. How do you, how do you reconcile that? Which one's more important? I'll, I'll give you an example, we sold a wind farm two years ago. People didn't like, we sold a wind farm. We sold it to somebody who retooled it and made it larger and more productive. It helped the region, it made us look worse. So what's, you know, those are the kinds of things that we'll have to talk about. We could shop around away from BPA potentially, I'm not saying we will, I'm not saying we won't, there's a big decision coming up on that. That could make us look better or worse, but help the region potentially. So, you're absolutely right, those are the things we need to get into. And I don't know which net will stand up the most, I don't, I don't know which one. Whether it's net carbon free, net neutral, net 100% clean, net, I don't, I don't know. We'll have that discussion.
All right, unless anybody has anything else. Thank you, Frank, for that presentation, and thank you commissioners for the discussion. I look forward to seeing what comes next, and I've been so prompt at every meeting, and this is the first one we've gone over, so I apologize for that, but we are 15 minutes late, but that's all right, the discussion was definitely worth it. So, with that, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mindy.